All right, well, we're gonna call to order the. Landing board meeting on October four, twenty twenty-three, alphabetical roll call, please.
Clark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan here. Amy. Amy, where'd you go? All right, Deirdre, you're here.
Deirdre Hobson, I hear.
We have a quorum.
All right, so, uh, oh, Amy, you're here, right? Say officially that you're here. You're muted, though.
You're muted.
All right, um, hopefully Kevin will join us, but we're gonna start tonight with the continued hearing regarding the, um, zoning bylaws because one of our members has to be at another engagement with another town board in another town shortly, so. Um, we left last time with, we recommended, uh, five to zero, Article Four. In the last couple of days, I think if you recall, uh, Jean Haley Diplo spoke about the dark sky thing. And in the last couple of days, including today and just as late as a half hour ago. We've been talking back and forth about it, and she was concerned that the reference to dark sky as an entity, I guess it's a company, Clark, that. Or some entity.
It's an organization.
Organization. Um, that specific reference to, and so I guess she was explaining there is. You know, there are guidelines about products and the light bulbs and all of that stuff, but then there's also a different level of a certification process. And she was concerned that the language we wrote with the specific reference to dark sky was ambiguous enough. That someone would demand the certification by dark sky, which costs thousands of dollars to obtain. In a future project of field lights. And it did come up apparently in some disputes with Barnes Field that have since been resolved. So, the solutions he suggested, and I just suggested to the judge shortly before this meeting, is that the first phrase of what we've written. With the specific reference to the words dark sky would be taken out. We would still have what is the core principle of dark sky, you can't point, point the lights up. You have to point them down, you have to shield them, not have obnoxious lighting go to your neighbors, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, which is in our current pilot, so. I, I, I don't wanna dwell on this all, you know, but, uh, Kevin, your hand is up and then Amy, but I. You know, the concern is that it was ambiguous enough that in the future, the town would get jammed up on it.
Well, if I might go first here. You know, the dark skies organization is the only one out there doing this that's of reputable. Um, technical girth to get their heads in their minds around this that are experts in the field. And they put forth the recommendations based on those experts. Not to make money on their recommendations, not to advance products for their own, um, coffers. Um, there's also organizations out there that do this in other technical disciplines. Some people may know, know them as A S T M, okay? If we're not gonna reference them, okay, because they're the ones in the front forefront of doing this. Because they also have a certification program for a thousand dollars, I think there's some disingenuous, ingenuousness about that. And I just wanna be clear that referencing them does not bind us. Or people buy the regulations because we have a reference to them in here. We're not saying that something, someone needs to go through that certification process. And I think we are better served by keeping it in there, that's the organization people refer to that you can provide technical guidance on. An additional information on if you want to, just as if you could do that with other. Organizations out there that set technical standards for everything from as arcane as concrete, okay, in the construction industry.
Okay.
All right. I'm just putting this forth, that I feel that this is an important thing to keep in there and just pulling it out because there's been. Questions about what this means and other things is not the right approach here, and it's not just that field, it's other fields in town, and I think people. Need to be served as a whole about looking at this holistically about what it means for dark skies, it's not just anti-glare. It's not just certain products, it's not certifications.
I get it, and, and I made it clear that there was no intent to require a certification process. Um, is, is the reference to dark sky in capital letters or small letters?
It's in, uh, it's in quotation marks.
In small letters.
In small letters.
It's not that you can even say that. It's not referring to the organization, because that would be in caps.
Right.
But to a design approach.
It's a design approach.
To a design approach, correct. I, 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 look, I don't, I don't want. Town meeting to blow up over this, you know, relatively, I won't say it's unimportant, but relatively unimportant compared to the entirety of Article Four. But if you wanna leave the language as is, and we'll, you know, we'll just, when I get to the point of. Presenting these articles to the select board, we can go through it with them.
I think we just need to make it not connected to a corporation or anybody who has ties to it, and that can be done. But it needs.
Well, that is done, it's done in what.
Yeah, so one option is to say, rather than say, um. The use must conform to the dark sky guidelines, I suppose you say uses should conform. To the dark sky guidelines, and then we have the more specific requirements of shielding the light, casting it downward and not. Not producing glare on abutting properties, which are essentially the dark sky guidelines, um, themselves. Or, or at least distilled version of them, but I think you could, you could just soften. Any concerns people have or alleviate those concerns maybe by just saying. Uses should follow dark sky guidelines.
Again, I think it's over, being overly concerned about something and reading too much into it, but. Yeah, but, you know, people have different perspectives on it depending on where they're sitting, so. The Barnes, Barnes Field was put through this process apparently, and I mean, they settled it, and I don't think in the settlement, they ended up dealing with. Having these certifications need to be done, and it's not just a thousand, she used the word thousands plural, I personally have no idea. Certification cost, but are we good with changing it to should and just?
I mean, I, I'm for it being. Must, I mean, must conform to dark sky design strategies. Um, because the ball fields aren't the only. Light pollution, light source conflicts that we have in town.
Yeah, I, I told her that, I told her that, you know, we, the boat, the two. Uh, zoning and planning have been applying this for a while now on residential projects, and we just haven't had a lot of commercial projects with. A big new parking lot come in front of us where we've had to apply it to that, but we would certainly.
Stop and shop, I mean, stop and shop, we did.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, we, we would certainly want them to apply to a big commercial parking lot, and. I, I'll, I'll go with the board's pleasure because we can explain this when we go before the select board to review these articles and, and.
Yeah.
And didn't you say Amy had her hand up?
I don't know, Amy, do you wanna? You're, you're muted.
Can't hear you, Amy.
Can't hear you.
You're muted, Amy.
But we could just take a straw vote if you wanna change. The language, I'd say, I mean, I'll say, I think that what we have is reasonable. Um, I don't think it's gonna be a big problem, it seems like, um. Or.
I also explained to her, if something gets into litigation because, you know, Butter, Butter wants to say the town's creating a nuisance, I said, you're gonna be in a battle of experts anyway. So, you know, but we're not requiring you to do that as a means of getting a permit, and I said, all your existing lights are grandfathered, and I'm like. What's, you know.
And sports, uh, sports venues have to, um, go for a special permit anyway.
Yeah, I, I just.
All right, how about this, how about this? What if we said instead of using the term guidelines, we said principles? Under the dark sky, um, website, it talks about five principles for responsible outdoor.
Yeah.
Lighting.
Fine with me.
Principles are, are protocols, protocols. Principles, they call them principles, um, and they are use light only if needed. Direct light, so it falls only where it's needed, light should be no brighter than necessary. Use light only when it's needed, again, and use warmer color lights where possible.
Yeah, I, that, that sounds better, you know, if, to the extent the word guidelines implies that we're invoking that certification process. And again, if we use dark sky as a generic term rather than capitals referring to the organization, I think. I think we're fine, and I have no problem explaining that to the select board.
So do you wanna keep guidelines, or do you wanna change it to?
No, I use, change, I would change the word to principles if everybody's, Amy, now you got your hand up again, what's? You can't hear you.
It, and it definitely makes.
Volume up on your computer.
It makes sense to, to say light shall be not cast off, off-site and.
Yes, and keep that language that we added, yes.
Yeah, yeah, keep the language we added, but just tweak that first sentence.
Cassandra had a question too.
Yes, Cassandra, you're muted too.
I, I was just gonna say to Amy that you may need to log out and log back in again for your audio to work. Uh, I would give that a shot, because you're not showing as being muted.
All right, well, all right, we'll wait for her to come back, right, um. Um, all right, so we, I guess the motion we'll put on the floor, and we'll wait to vote until Amy's there, the motion I'll put on the floor is to. Reaffirm our recommendation of approval for Article Four with the change in the dark sky provision of the word. Guidelines to principles. Someone second that?
Second.
Thank you.
And you're keeping the must, or you're changing it to should?
No, leave the most, leave the must.
Okay.
Must have must. All right, and then when we get to Article Five, they, we spoke about most of this, I think, while Amy was still here at the other meeting. And really, the only thing about our final approval of Article Five was just Amy's views on. Uh, Clark's proposal to change the large home review threshold to four thousand square feet since we are adding. Areas to the definition of, um, residential gross floor area. Um, it seemed that we had a consensus on that in the other. Meeting, but, uh, with the four of us who were there.
We also had the new definition of lot width and the description of lot width, that I hope people got an opportunity to look at.
Yep.
Okay. All right, I didn't, you know, I wondered if I, I had my volume down from working at my office today. I wonder if she just had that and just had to turn it back on. Oh, here she is. Connecting to audio. Now, now you got, you, all right, say something. Now, we still can't hear you. All right, so let, let, let's keep this moving along, so Amy, we have a motion on the floor with Article Four. Is to reaffirm our vote to recommend its passage with the change. In the dark sky provision of the word guidelines to principles. Yeah.
One other thing, remember, we changed the accessory small-scale solar energy provision as well.
I, I thought we did that before we voted.
No, we talked about it after the hearing, and so I had sent the, um, the highlighted languages on twenty-one of, uh, page twenty-one.
Right, so we, we, we've a comment, we put in a provision to accommodate the type of facility Kevin brought up at the last meeting. Uh, it would be by special permit over the twelve-foot height limit, but can't exceed eighteen, and it can't intrude on the. Set map, which makes sense, so. I'll amend my motion is that we reaffirm our approval of Article Four with the. Uh, exception for the flower-style ground-mounted solar accessory use. And the change in the dark sky provision of the word guidelines to principles. Second.
Second.
Thank you, all right. All in favor, Amy, you'll have to do it by raising your hand or thumbs up. Tom Callahan, aye. Okay. Deirdre, or Kevin?
Kevin Heine, aye.
Deirdre Hobson, aye.
Okay.
Oh, it's good to have a unanimous vote again.
Yeah, so, and, and, and let's just make sure that, because Jean also asked me for the most up-to-date things to get to the select board. And the zoning board, by the way, is meeting for their vote at six o'clock tomorrow, I'm gonna try to make it, I'll be driving from Boston, but. Uh, they're gonna take.
Are you gonna tune into the Z B A after this?
Not tonight, no, it's tomorrow.
They're meeting, oh, it's tomorrow?
It's tomorrow, six o'clock.
Okay, all right.
I'm gonna try to call them because I'll be in the car, and you never know if you get a Zoom signal in the car. All right, so back to Article Five, um, Amy, the reason we put this off was you missed the part. We had discussed most of Article Five, we all seemed to be in consensus, but Clark had proposed. Um, changing the threshold for large home review to four thousand square feet in a lot, in light of the fact that we're expanding the definition of what's included in R G F A. Um, so, with, uh, that amendment, uh, we'll make a motion that we recommend.
We still need the, the width, the lot width dealt with.
Sorry, and.
We have to rewrite that, right?
And, and the judge's, uh, change to the definition of, of lot width.
So we simplified the definition in Article Two to simply say it's the width of the lot. Between the side lot lines.
Yes.
Okay, and then we went into the actual regulations themselves. And said the required lot, minimum lot width specified in the table of dimensional regulations. That's the, you know, whatever it is, a hundred and twenty-five feet or a hundred feet. Is measured between the sidelines of the lot along a line which is parallel to the center line of the abutting street, that's in the current definition. Um, and touches the point of the principal building nearest to the front lot line. Which measurement line may, may or may not coincide, coincide with the required setback line, front setback line. So if a lot is set way back from the, a house is set way back from the street, the lot width, the minimum lot width has to be. Where the front of that building is, if it's closer to the street, if it's at the setback line. Then the setback line, that has to be, meet the minimum lot width in the table. Then there was this, if you recall, there was a second minimum lot width requirement, which was, I guess, the pork chop lot, uh, provision. Um, which, so, we added a sentence that said the portion of the lot between the front yard setback line. And the front lot line may have a lesser wa- lot width than the minimum lot width specified in the table. Provided, the lot width of said portion is equal to or greater than. The required frontage distance at all points.
Right.
So, for that, sort of pork chop or whatever, if the minimum frontage is fifty feet, it only needs.
The skinny part of the pork chop was always going to have to be at least fifty feet wide.
To the front, to the front setback line, not to the where the larger lot width is measured, so you, you could widen out, right?
People will do fifty, and then they'll have like only a ten-foot wide driveway.
Yeah, yeah, and you don't wanna do that, right?
We are encouraging, we've never had it, so Kevin.
I, I thought there was some provision for doing a spherical approach to these things, what happened to incorporating that into this?
Oh, because that's beyond the scope of what this was advertised as, it would be a totally different regulation. So we were talking about thinking of that for the, for the spring or the next fall.
Okay, thank you.
Change that.
Because in the, in the spring too, we are going to review all of those numbers. For example, we have fifty-foot frontage in all three residential districts, but then the lot width is a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five, and a hundred and twenty-five, so. In reviewing all of it, we may take this new approach of using the diameter of a circle, which I. Think is a great way to go, but I think that's better left for the spring.
But you also wanna look, I mean, that's a more, a more difficult, um, thing to amend, because there you were, you're actually creating non-conformities. You know, there are lots that have already been created that wouldn't meet these requirements, so you have to think about that and understand. What the consequence is gonna be of changing those, so that's, that's why it's not going now. Um.
If, if we, if we have the wherewithal to hire M A P C, that would be part of their review is to kind of study that and what would the impact would be. So. All right, with those two changes, then endorsing, motion to endorse Article Five is so amended. Second?
Second.
Okay, did we lose Amy again?
You lost Amy again.
That's the whole point, is to have her vote.
There's someone to, uh.
Can she vote by email, like calling you on the cell phone, and then you put it on?
Just lost Kevin too.
Dropping like flies.
I'm staying.
Well, we gotta get you out of here, so. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that con con meeting doesn't start until seven, so I think we're good.
Yeah. I talked to one of the selectmen today about getting us live, and I pointed out what Justin told us at the last meeting, that it's a matter of personnel to run the machines for the hybrid meeting.
Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't seem right, we should go live as soon as possible.
Yeah, I mean, but I think, I, I think even the state is committed that if we go back, we need to have the hybrid option, so. Unless they teach other people how to run that machine at a meeting, well. Um, we're kind of stuck with one guy who knows how to do it, maybe, you know, and then I guess another. Another person must know how to do it over at the school department. So, there's two people to run three or four machines. And with all the boards, we'd be, they'd be meeting every night of the week, and. Yeah. Unless they change the scope of their jobs, you know. To include all night work, I don't know what was going to, but.
Cassandra, um, do you know when these final warrant article language has to be submitted? To the select board, Tuesday, okay.
I think it has to get to the newspaper, um, on Tuesday, to my knowledge.
Okay, and the, the select board asked me for, and obviously tomorrow morning, Cassandra, we wanna circulate the final product to.
I, I will, I will make those changes. Trying to get back in.
Yeah.
So I will make those changes tonight, and so that you'll.
Yeah, I, I just want, I wanna make sure the Z B A is voting on the most recent stuff. And thank you for updating your quick summaries, and I've told other boards that that's really, those summaries are gonna be the basis of our presentations both. To them and to, uh, to the town meeting as well.
Cassandra, did you see Kevin, he says he's trying to get back in? No?
No, I'm keeping my eyes peeled for him, but I don't see either him or Amy in the attendees.
I mean, you know what, we can vote.
We can vote after, okay.
We can vote, and we can, we still. Well, and we, and we lost Kevin too, so we're gonna go ahead and vote, and then, you know, a town meeting, we can report, it's a five-zero vote, but.
Well, I heard, I heard what the conversation was.
Okay, all right, yeah, no, but you have to officially be on this to, to do the vote, so we, we'll, we'll deal with it, don't worry about it. But try to get, try to get in because we have an A N R to deal with, so.
I know, I can see.
And Kevin's trying to get in too, I don't know what happened, so, um, all right, all right, we'll see.
So we're good?
Yeah, so.
Kevin just popped in, um, if you wanna just wait a second, I'm gonna pull in him in for the attendees.
So the motion's been made in a second, and we'll just break.
Sorry, I had, I ended up dropping out as, as you guys saw.
Yeah, all right, so we're gonna vote with the four of us, and Amy can join in before town meeting, and we can report the town meeting at five zero. So all in favor of the endorsement of, for Article Five, um, as amended.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Clark Brewer, Tom Callahan, aye.
Kevin Heine, aye.
Deirdre Hobson, aye.
Okay, all right, thank you, Your Honor, for being here tonight.
Thank you, I'll, I get that.
I don't think you need to be with the Z B A tomorrow.
No, I don't think so, I think they were satisfied, um, with what was done.
If they don't get a quorum at six, they're punting it to seven forty-five anyways, so.
Yeah.
And then I'll, you know, we'll, we'll deal with the select board when we deal with the select board.
Okay, I'm gonna try and get that, uh, done tomorrow with the latest Friday morning and get it out to you, I'm assuming they want it in the Word version. We don't know.
Cassandra, Word?
Uh, Woody does prefer Word documents.
No, no, the, um, select board, when they.
Oh, um.
For the warrant.
For the warrant.
I don't know that that matters.
Reform it, they're gonna reformat it for the warrant.
Yeah, they're gonna reformat it in some way, but I don't know if they prefer a Word document. If you want to send it to me as a Word document, I can always convert it to a PDF later.
Okay, all right, all right, I just didn't want it to get out of whack if I sent a PDF and then they needed to convert it to Word, I didn't want that to happen, okay.
Yeah, it's probably easier to do it the opposite way, to send it as a Word, and if I have to convert it to a PDF, I can do that.
And then who's gonna add on these, don't you need to add on a description or something at the bottom, or what do you do?
We'll figure it out.
Just, you'll, you'll add that in.
That's an intro.
Okay, all right, good night, everyone, thank you.
All right.
Can I make a motion to continue two oh five Atlantic Ave?
Yes, you can. To November fifteenth.
Second.
What date, what?
November fifteen at six thirty.
Okay, that's a, a amended motion. Is there a second, second?
All right, all in favor?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Kevin Heine, aye.
Deirdre Hobson, aye.
Yeah, yeah, we are, just so you know about our scheduling, we're going to be off on the first. And then on the eighth, for those of you who are interested, the zoning bylaw committee is meeting with the consultant. On the housing choice proposals, and will show us their work on proposed overlay district, and. Uh, their contract is ending, so this will be the, the one, the one time we get to all talk to the consultant, so. Uh, members of this board are certainly welcome to come to that meeting on Wednesday, the eighth. All right, so next we have an, uh, an A N R for, what was the address on Sawyer, I don't have my agenda in front of me.
One ninety-three.
One ninety-three, is there a notice that we need to read, no?
Uh, A N Rs aren't technically public hearings, so there's no public hearing notice.
All right, then, uh, let's promote, we have three attendees, anybody who, uh. Wish to be promoted, and I don't, Amy's back, good.
And maybe Amy's back.
Maybe.
I'm promoting Steve as we speak, um. And if Steve needs anybody else promoted, I obviously can promote them as well.
Okay, and I see Paul Cleary out there, um, that believes in Butter, so. Paul, if you, um, wish to be heard, you raise your hand, we can promote you, and you can speak. Live, or if you wanna write something in the Q and A, we can deal with it that way as well. All right, uh, Mr. Horstfall, we'll leave it to you, I hope I got that correct, um. You have the floor, and explain what it is that you're.
Good evening, good evening, thank you very much for having us tonight. Uh, I'm here in front of you for a A N R application at one ninety-three Sawyer Street. Uh, for the Desmond residents, they are seeking to divide their lot into, existing lot into two. Uh, in which, uh, both lots will have, uh, frontage in areas required by the zoning. Uh, code, uh, the, interesting enough, that one of the lots will have a. Uh, fifty feet of, uh, the required fifty feet of frontage, yeah, narrowing down. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my screen if you don't mind, okay, is that good, great? All right. Uh, we've got, uh, let me just zoom out a little bit here and kind of figure this out. Okay, so the Desmonds have their existing dwelling, uh, here, uh, with a driveway and right-of-way. Uh, that they have to the northerly edge of the property for the existing structure. They have landscaping in the back, uh, their septic system is situated here. And a substantial landscaping area all along the pool area itself. Uh, they're seeking to divide this so that they have fifty feet of frontage for the new lot. Uh, in which the dwelling or proposed structure will be built back in this section here, that would requi- uh, meet the requirements of the lot width. Uh, the existing dwelling is here, will remain the same, we've provided the required, uh, thirty-foot rear yard setback. The septic system will be relocated at a position that will, will be determined at a later date. Um, we're not exactly sure where the perks are gonna happen, or where this structure may happen or be built in the back. Uh, they have an idea, uh, but not set in stone at this point. So, uh, we, we have some wetlands in the back that, um, have been shown per mass G I S at this point. We do have them field, uh, flagged at this point, we weren't able to get them located in time for the application. Uh, I spoke with the Desmonds regarding that, and they said that they wanted to proceed with this estimated one, and if we needed to revise. A lot for a particular reason, we'd be back in front of the board at a later date, uh, to move a lot line, et cetera, to make that accommodation. Uh, to move a lot line, et cetera, to make that accommodation. I don't see the wetland line moving a whole heck of a lot to impact this, uh, to be honest with you, I, we did locate. Uh, some information that was there before, a few years ago, when we did a survey for the property. Um, and we, you know, at this point, we decided to move forward with the estimated line. Uh, so in, in front of you, we're essentially just seeking the, the two lots, Lot A and Lot B. The Lot A will have a required thirty-five thousand square feet of uh, area. Has twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine square feet of upland. Uh, has a frontage of a hundred and forty-one feet, plus or minus. Uh, meets the lot with requirements. Uh, and then the Lot B. Uh, is substantially bigger, fifty-three thousand square feet. Uh, and meets the requirements of uh, the frontage and area lot width at the setback where the building will be constructed. I'm happy to answer any questions if the board may have.
Mark, since you have to go soon, I'll give you a first crack at this.
Yeah, well, my only comments are, you know, pretty standard A and R, it's on a public way. Um, you have to have fifty feet of frontage and access. Uh, the access can't be illusory. Uh, and then um, they're entitled to endorsement if they meet those requirements, and it's a bonus that. The, the, the lot that's being created and the lot that's existing will both conform to zoning.
Okay.
Because, because people uh, certainly could create a lot that doesn't conform to zoning, which would be kinda. Could be for other purposes. Um, but in terms of the standard day and or, they have frontage and, and they have uh. Uh, access to a public way, so I don't have any questions.
I have some questions. You're all set, um. I'll go, I'll go to Amy, I see your hand up. Amy, we can't hear you.
Perhaps if Amy is still having issues with her audio, Amy, I know it's not convenient, but you could use the Q and A box and I'm happy. To read it out for you, um. That could be an option, I know it's not the easiest.
Alright, uh, Kevin or Deirdre?
Um, I'll, I'll just put forward, what, what happens to that sidewalk? Is that just where the existing sidewalk is? And that's gonna um, be relocated for the existing building that would appears and based on your schematic to go across?
This slate walk that's here, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe that all the landscape features in here will be redone in some fashion. A driveway will be expected to be placed off of Sawyer Street in this location to access the new Lot B, where the building will be built.
And that would include that um, indentation for the, for the wall that looks like.
Yeah, that's the property line, the property line is defined along the face of that brick wall, that'll stay. Uh, because that's part of the abutting lot as well, that'll all remain. There was the steps more than likely will be reconfigured with a landscape architect. Uh, and a driveway of some sort will be fashioned through there.
That's an interesting feature on the lot line there. Questions, thank you.
In actuality, that's gonna create a problem with our new definition of lot width.
I was thinking that when I heard it earlier when you were talking.
Yeah. I know, but if it, if it's all approved, it's gonna be retroactive to the date of our public notice, you know, the notice of our public hearing, so. You know, assuming it passes a town meeting, it's effectively in effect now. Anyway, but I, I was wondering, can you zoom in on that fifty-foot frontage? Because I don't understand where this point sixty-five is, I mean, it's almost. Too convenient, too convenient that it's exactly fifty feet.
Yeah, no, that's exactly how the record plan uh, had defined that lot, there is an angle point at that location. And that is how the zero point six five uh, fell in. Uh, you know, the, the overall lot, we happened to divide it exactly at fifty feet to make the forty-nine point three five and the point six five work. Uh, but there is an angle point there.
So it's not a straight fifty feet along Sawyer?
No, it's not, this is oh eight thirty-one, and this is fifty-nine forty-one. So there, there's a different bearing system, bearing that is an angle point.
Is there anything that can show us what this point six, I mean, you're telling me the point sixty-five, is that an angle?
That's correct.
It's not in the same straight line as the forty-nine point thirty-five?
That's correct.
And then I looked at that, I looked at that and questioned whether that's an actual fifty feet.
It's fifty feet uh, as it intersects the public way. It's the cumulative number of where it hits the public way.
Alright, anybody else have any comments, Kevin or Deirdre?
Can you hear me, Tom?
Yeah, I hear you.
Oh, good.
We can finally hear you.
Um, uh, I guess what I would say is that I really appreciate the hard work that the applicant has made. And there is a lot of unknowns that they are asking us to approve. Based on what they, their supposition is, which is a very common practice that we see before us. But in this case, there's enough uncertainty that I would expect we would have greater precision than this. Specifically because in, in a number of the. Um, areas where the applicant's gonna be concerned, we have a. Uh, a drainage field that we have to figure out what we're gonna do, we have. Just the approximation of the situation seems to be. That it would be in the best interest of the applicant to have a lot more precision.
Well, this isn't a large home review or.
It's not about a large home review. I am asking about an A and R, and we typically want to have items in an A and R. As precise as absolutely possible and probable, so that the applicant doesn't have to come before us again. And so I can see places where things are a little bit dragging here and there, and I would just ask for greater precision.
Well, again, the A and R doesn't go to whether the rest of the lot is buildable or not, and specifically. Put in our decisions that this is not approval zoning, you know.
Yeah, but we have, we have intersecting lines which are not. Uh, distinct, there, they, there are edges, and I would expect a better rendition of exactly what this is gonna look like.
At, at what point are you saying this?
Well, just the question of what, they, they said, well, in the future, we're gonna figure out where, sorry, but I had to change my scale, so I can't really. Read it, but you've got a drain, you've got a drainage field, and it's got a margin and it's intersecting another piece of land. And I would just expect they would want to have things tightened down so that they don't come before us again.
But for an A and R, they don't have to.
Yeah, they'll have to go to Board of Health for a, a new septic system design, they'll have to go to Concom if.
But Amy, that's not the point of an A and R, we don't.
I know, but let's ask them again, have they been anywhere besides us?
No, we have not.
Okay, so. For an applicant is to go before the cases where things are gonna be the most problematic.
No, Amy.
I don't think so, I don't think.
They, they have to subdivide their property and create the lot first before they can go seek permitting on that lot. So this is the logical first step, whether they come back to us later for a large home review or a special permit of some sort, I don't know, but. They have a number of development channel, challenges here, one I pointed out, the septic is a one, the wetlands is another, but that's not.
Yeah, but, but, but what you're saying is also at the same time, we actually don't have much to say about it once it leaves us. And we do an A and R.
That's true, that's.
Yes, and we have lots of examples where we've had to go back and do things because we don't ask. The situation to be positioned so that the applicant is no longer liable for anything, that would seem to be the best thing for them.
Amy, A and R is about frontage and, and uh, access.
That's it?
It, and, and, and like I said, it's a bonus that what they've created appears to conform to zoning. Uh, although, it turns out there may be an issue with the fifty-foot um, width in the front. But. People can create through A and R lots or, or areas that aren't buildable.
Yes, but can I go back to what we've been dealing with in the last two years and say? That we've had to, we've had to roll things back and revisit them, and it would just seem to be better for the applicant. To have things tied down so that it, it rolls off our back.
Well, I think Black Horse, Black Horse Lane, it was misrepresented as part of a public way, and, and it turns out it was a. A private way, portion of Black Horse Lane. And, and I think the, the engineer's plan was mislabeled, but here we've got Sawyer Street, it's a public way, it's been in existence for a long time. There's nothing about it that seems inadequate.
The, the A and R is very limited process, and, and we, we applied. Applied it correctly in Black Horse Lane by addressing the issue of frontage. On an adequate way, and, and you know, non-illusory frontage, and we addressed the issue that. That uniquely brought up about other structures on the property. We didn't get into the rest of it, of whether these proposed lots on Black Horse Lane or anywhere else in an A and R ultimately gonna be buildable. And we, like I said, we qualify our decision, that our decision is not saying they're buildable. And Clark's absolutely right, we've had people come to force and tell us they're not gonna build on a lot, and they've created non-buildable lots, there was one. I don't know, where was it, was it on um, Atlantic somewhere, I believe we did, dealt with it, where, where. Or, or Whitehead Road, or it was somewhere where they created three lots and one of them was not buildable.
Well, I would presume that the applicant would want to be able to take advantage of their resources.
But, they, they have a long road to go here about whether they get to build anything on this lot. They have a number of challenges, and I think they're aware of them.
I just want to interject on this discussion that the plan as put forth in front of us is stamped by a duly licensed. Surveyor in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, it was stamped within a week or so of the date we're having this hearing. I can't see based on the scale of this, whether the notes cover that point six five feet that appears to be. Not clearly identified where it is or where it comes from, or how it's measured on this plan. As currently presented. To your comment on that, Tom, I don't see that as adequately meeting. What's been put forth here unless it's in the notes, which I can't read at this scale, nor have I had the opportunity to look at this in person. So I would like to ask the applicant whether the notes cover an explanation of that point six five feet. That would be added to what's demarcated as frontage for Lot B on this plan as currently presented in front of us here.
Well, I could tell you that I did a thorough survey of this property per the deed, per the plans of record. Uh, in which the zero point six five is also shown on a record of plan at the Registry of Deeds. Uh, that was adhered, copied through, through this particular portion, I have the plan references that are on the plan. I may not have specifically identified that there was a zero point six five bend in a note, but I can clearly state. That on a plan of record at the Registry of Deeds and within this particular plan, there is an angle point of zero point six five feet. At the end of that property that, as you see on this plan.
And is, is that record identified as such, is it, is it cited anywhere on this plan in front of us or another documentation? Put forth in this application for A and R?
I have referenced the plans of record from the Registry of Deeds. We have a deed of the property. Uh, that is also, I, I have to, I don't have it with me in front of me here. Um, I, I'd have to go and uh, dig it out, but.
I, 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 I appreciate your, your reference in that, I'm just, I'm just looking for the paper trail here. To clearly be demarcated so that we can say that this has been. Meets the thresholds that we have, as limited as they are, but respecting what they are, meets them, and I'm, I'm. If it's at the deeds, that's great, can we cite that and has it been cited here? I'm not hearing it has been.
I, I don't know any other way to do this, other than to do a detailed of the zero point six five. And put it on the plan, I, that's the only way that I can show you.
That I would suggest to someone that isn't a surveyor, I am not. But in conveying the practice of surveying to others that aren't. A visual may go the hundred yards that you're looking for here. Uh, I'm just putting that forth as a possible soft suggestion, I'm not for sure where the rest of the board lands on this. But um, that's why I brought up this discussion, with all due respect for the work that you've done to, to answer that, I, I have no, no. Um, I just, I just don't under, I, I don't have a site, I don't have the paper path forward on that.
Well, Kevin, the. Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you, Clark. Uh, the plan references are on this plan down in the lower left corner.
That's correct.
I mean, that's usually what we will say.
These are all the plan references that we use to generate this particular pro, plan in general. Along with the current deed. And I, I, the, the bearings themselves tell us that there's an angle point at that location. Uh, and I've specifically said that the forty-nine point three five. Uh, plus is, you know, the fifty feet total frontage is here, says that forty-nine point three five plus zero point six five equals fifty feet. I just, I can't get any clearer than that, the bearing here tells me that there's an angle, and up here, this bearing tells me there's another. That's a different bearing, that's, it's an angle in that street at that location.
Alright, uh, anybody else in the board have anything to add? Ask Mr. Cleary, the abutter who's out there. And I've seen somebody else and Mr. Silkfront, anybody from the public uh, has anything to say, now would be the time. Paul, you have your hand up, you want to be uh, promoted? See if you can promote Paul. Alright, Paul, you're muted, but go, go ahead when you're ready to go.
Good evening, Chairman, uh, thank you for promoting me and recognizing me, I am. Paul Caleri from two oh five Sawyer, and I just wanted to say, I think the architect did a great job with the layout of this. A and R plan, and I don't have any issues as an abutting neighbor, that's all I just wanted to say, I think they did a nice job with the presentation, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Paul. Uh, anyone else in the public wish to be heard? Silkfront and Mr. Desmond, the applicant, if not. Uh, we'll entertain a motion from the board. Someone wants to make it, I'll make it, a move that we endorse, uh, this. Uh, A and R proposal.
Second.
Any further discussion, if not, our alphabetical road call, Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmar, uh, withhold my vote.
Okay, that's next, Stane and Deirdre?
I.
Thank you. Alright, thank you, uh, Mr. Horstfall and Mr. Desmond, uh, thank you.
Thank you, have a great night.
Okay, we don't have much else, um, went over the schedule, we have minutes that were amended later in the day today. From September twentieth. Um, make a motion that we approve those minutes.
I just have one thing, my name's spelled wrong, it's not a, it's just a constant thing in my life, so. Whether you fix it or not is. It's just, it's not me.
I actually have a client who spells it I E, you're an E I, right?
Yeah, well, I think uh, it's got an A on A in it this time, so.
Alright, we'll, we'll make that change. Kid, I had a football coach, it was Callahan with a G, and he used to, he used to yell at me and say, not only can you not tackle, you can't spell your name right.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know.
So the, the point of clarification I made has been captured?
Yeah, yeah, it was captured late, uh, Angela sent an email around later and captured that.
Great, appreciate it.
Okay, so um, all in favor of approving those minutes, Tom Callahan and I?
Amy Glassmar, I.
Kevin Hein, I.
Deirdre Hobbs, and I.
Okay. And Cassandra, we have nothing else to deal with tonight? Okay, Ken, we'll we, we, are we meeting again this month? Are we meeting the eighteen?
Oh, yes, uh, you're meeting uh next week, the eleventh and the eighteen.
Okay.
Um, I should let you know that I will not be available, uh, I think, in, on the eighteenth, because I won't be in the country.
Okay.
Time zone does not permit.
Fair enough.
I think Dave Farrick made a zoning bylaw committee from Egypt.
He did not.
Well, I could try, but I honestly don't want to be the person that holds everybody up.
No, that's okay.
All right, no, real good, all right, thank you all, I'll let a motion to adjourn. I'll make the motion, all right, second, size second, uh, all in favor? Tom Kelly and I.
Amy Glassmar, I.
Kevin Hein, I.
Deirdre Hobbs, and I.
All right, thank you.